It's six thirty. I'd like to call this meeting to order. A meeting of the Enfield Budget Committee of October fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, which is also a meeting of the Enfield Board of Selectmen for October fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you.
Okay, so the first order of business is board organization, so we need to select a chair of the budget committee.
May I nominate? Demetri. I can't say your last name. Yeah, Demetri, I can't pronounce it.
Yes.
Demetri.
That's my nomination.
I'll second it. Sorry. I accept it.
We have one nomination and Demetri accepted, is there any other? Being done, I vote as the budget committee.
Say hi.
Hi. I have to bring someone here.
You don't have to do that.
You ain't not a chair, now you're me.
Wow.
I started reading this.
Now I really need to make sure you spell your name right.
I think I'm vice chair.
Vice chair.
I would say so.
Absence.
It's ready, I'll get it. I'll make sure it's correct.
Would anybody would like to nominate vice chair?
Green.
Second.
Yes, you've got to always be here to me. You're not planning any vacations or acts.
I may be on the opposite side of the country now, but we'll try to schedule around. So.
I'll second that nomination.
Nancy already did.
Oh, you did? Okay.
So we both by. Hi.
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 Anybody opposed?
Just Nancy. Sure.
For me.
I know. I tried to read this, but. First time running a meeting, at least in the. From the house, I still have your book, I will return it in a while. All right. First order approval for second order of minutes. Of. January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. For many of us within attendance. Minutes were distributed in advance, does anybody have any corrections?
No. They look good to me, both of them.
Do you want to approve both minutes at the same time, including February second?
I move that we approve both minutes at the same time.
Anybody second?
Second.
All those in favor, say hi.
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 Minutes of January thirteenth and February second, two thousand and twenty-two are approved. Okay. Second on the agenda.
Other report?
So I'm Tim Green, I'm with Robertson Green, here to present the financial report for the town for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. I just tend to run through it. Sometimes it can be. Dry and generic, but. Happy to entertain questions as I go, or at the end it's up to anyone, you know, all the members here. First things first, though, I always point out, the first two pages are basically what you hire our firm to come and do, is give you this two-page letter that says. Hopefully, you hope, but I'm pleased to present that. You had a clean opinion again this year. You get an audit opinion on what's called opinion units within the town, it just means different types of financial statements, so you have. Multiple opinion units, we have governmental activities, which are full accrual statement, so these are the statements that are most similar to a corporate statement, if you will. And then you have your general funds and other major funds, which are your basically budgetary statements. And then you have an aggregate, so your smaller funds are combined into one opinion unit, if you will. So you could, the town theoretically could get a mixed opinion in any one year. But again, I have not had to issue an adverse opinion or a qualified opinion, probably since I've been doing your audit, so. And that's a good thing, that's what you strive for, you strive for fairly presented financial statements. The letter itself, if you were prepared to last year, changed a little bit, some of the wording changed, it's a little, auditing standards have. Incorporated some new standards that changed the verbiage and tried to make it even more clear what our responsibility is as auditors and what the town's responsibility as the management and presenter of the financial statements themselves. But beyond that, there really is no change to how an audit is done and what information is presented. Management's discussion and analysis, I don't talk about anything within this document, because this document is prepared by the town. Primarily probably a Lisa, but it's prepared by the town office. It is. Basically, there's a checklist of items that you are permitted to discuss and also a lot of stuff that you're not permitted to discuss, so it's very. Very cookie cutter in a sense of. They want, the standards want you to compare two years for the various, for your statement in that position and the changes in that position. As well as talking about significant budget variances. And just any other significant highlights of the year that are very quantitative, if you will. So it's not looking forward, looking, it's not looking to project future results, it's just looking to comment on the previous results. The first two exhibits, again, this is, so these are statement in that position and statement activities, so this is your full accrual basis. Again, these are. Trying to be as close to a business statement as it can be with the, obviously, the difference in. Goals and objectives of a government versus a business. But you can see here clearly that you're showing your capital assets, you're showing your long-term liabilities. The town's significant long-term liabilities, of course, are its debt and its net pension liability. Net position for the year ended, you can see the total in that position was just under fifteen million, of that, just over ten million represents capital assets net of the debt that is related to those capital assets, so if you borrow to. Rehab a building or to buy equipment, the net amount goes into that net investment in capital assets. Other net position restrictions are for your permanent funds and for any other funds or balances that are restricted by outside legislation or donors and grantor. Limitations, so, so within your other purposes, which is just that nine hundred thousand dollar value, primarily like your library and other unspent grants. And then you're left with an unrestricted net position of just under three point five million dollars. Looking, a quick comparison I ran for the last four years, and that's an increase of about a million dollars in unrestricted net position. Statement two, exhibit two, excuse me, will show you your total change in that position, but. Within the report, there is no way to actually compare without comparing to last year's fiscal report, what the changes in your unrestricted were, so. That was basically about a million dollar increase from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one, in unrestricted net position.
So in layman's terms, good thing, bad thing?
No, good thing, yeah, I mean, again, net position is like retained earnings. In total, and then the unrestricted is what's kind of available. But again, that, that would, if you were to look at matching, if you were to think about it in a matching sense, your liabilities for debt, as I said, are tied to, are matched to capital asset. Whereas your liabilities for pension is not matched to anything, so. You always carry that liability, and so having a positive unrestricted net position, most, if you were to compare with other towns, you will see a lot of them have a negative net unrestricted, because. After everything is kind of matched with each other. I mean, your capital assets are matched with your debt, you know, your cash is matched with your current liabilities, such as payables and so on. When you're left with those long-term liabilities that have no asset tied to them. tends to throw a town into a negative position, so it's, it's good, it's a good place for Enfield to be, where you have a positive net position right there.
It's unrestricted fund balances.
You mean under the same with the fund balance? I think that's different. That's not related to the under, under.
No, no, because it's, again, it does your, it's full accrual, so it shows everything. Exhibit two, statement activities, just showing your expenses and your revenues that are, your program revenues that relate to those, those functions of the government, and then your general revenues, which is primarily property taxes. So you can see the total change in that position was that is one billion, two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Exhibit three and five, these are the governmental fund statements, so this is modified accrual, so if this. If it's not, if you're not talking about a current resource such as a capital asset or debt, then it doesn't belong on the statement, so. Here is much more of your budgetary basis with a couple exceptions, which I can go, I will go through later. But you can see for the general fund total assets, just over seven million, total liabilities, just under five million. Deferred revenue of just over four hundred thousand and an ending total fund balance of one point eight million, of that, you can see that your unassigned is one point six million. So you have very little. Fund balance that's tied up in other classifications, non-spendable represents your tax-dated property that you hold for resale. Restricted, you know, less than ten thousand dollars restricted funds, that's probably donations that are for your welfare or other purposes. And then your assigned fund balance tends to be incumbents and other commitments of that picture. TIP district is a major fund as well, and that's a quantitative calculation, so you take total assets and total liabilities by fund and figure out if that is, as a percentage of the total town, significant. And so the TIP district has been for many years. You can see not a whole lot of activity on your balance sheet, you have cash and you have deferred revenue and you have a committed fund balance. Because it's tied, it's committed to the TIP district. Expendable trust funds as well are major. Primarily cash and investments. And inter-fund payable at the end of the year, basically reimbursements of some expenses that are paid out of those funds. And then committed fund balance in your expendable trust fund of just over two point four million.
And the expendable trust, so we, there was the financial malfeasance with the investment company, so where does that get booked?
That's within the cash and investment balance, but it's kind of been stuck at that figure until that.
And it just has to stay. Yeah, so like in thirty years when the guys.
Yes.
Great.
I'm, I mean.
Someone's going to remember this.
Yeah. Other governmental fund column, that's an aggregate of all your non-major, which there is a detailed exhibit in the back, which supplements these reports. So that's exhibit three, exhibit four is a crosswalk between the two. Exhibits, so exhibit three to exhibit one, this shows you the differences, so if you're starting exhibit three with a total fund balance of seven point three million. You're adding your net capital assets. You're adding a long-term receivable, which is a, an amortized loan forgiveness as part of, as a part of debt from a few years back. You are changing the way, if you pay debt regardless of what budget year that comes out of, a lot, a lot of towns in Enfield's no, no. You know, not unique in this way, if, if the debt payments due January fifteenth, they tend to pay in December because. Timing and bond bank or whoever your debt is through tend to want to make sure that payment comes in a little bit early, so. It's a separate budget year, but they're paying in December, so that, on a full accrual basis, you just pay, you just pay down your debt, that's all that happened, it wasn't a, you're not worried about what year it captures, so as soon as you pay that bill, so that's why there's a reconciliation between. Prepaid principal and interest on debt. Unavailable revenues on a modified accrual basis, if you aren't collecting on a receivable within sixty days after year end, it's not really available to use to spend, to pay those bills back, you know, back in two thousand and twenty-one. So, on a full accrual basis, when you, when you bill someone for services rendered for, for. Property taxes is not services rendered, but it's just a general revenue. But so when you commit that or you bill for something, it's, it's reported on a full accrual basis, like a business, you just have a receivable. But on a modified, modified accrual basis, again, you, you don't plan on collecting on it, you defer it. Obviously, all your long-term liabilities, which are not recorded on your governmental funds, so that's about ten million, and then some deferral related to pension and OPEC balances, those are calculated by actuaries. The town gets a report every year and implements that, that report into their financial statements. Exhibit five is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. So again, this is the modified accrual basis, so you can see total revenues for the general fund, about six point five million, total expenditures, five point seven. So that's excess of revenues over expenditures of about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you have other financing sources, which are transfers out primarily, as well as long-term debt that was issued. Resulting in a net change in fund balance at the year end of, just under nine hundred thousand dollars, so you, total fund balance went from nine hundred and fifty thousand to one point eight million. You can see the results in the TIF district, they increased by about a hundred and forty-one thousand, expendable trust fund increased by about three hundred and twenty-three thousand, and the total of your other minor funds increased by about a hundred and ninety thousand. Exhibit six.
None of that was the unassigned, right?
The, the total fund balance on exhibit five was one point eight, of that was one point six unassigned.
Okay.
And there's a slight difference in calculation to the unassigned that shows up in the back, which I will talk about. Exhibit six, again, another crosswalk between the two accounting bases from modified to full accrual, so you can see what effects there are for, for the capitalization. Capital assets and depreciation and changes in those deferred revenues and so on. So you go from on a governmental fund basis of a increase in net fund balance of one point five to an increase in that position of one point two, it just tells you the differences in how you have come to those numbers. Exhibit seven is a budgetary statement, so this, similar to exhibit three and five, except that this has, has. Incumbrances within this total, so this is more of a budgetary, so this is truly looking at what is remaining in your budget, and encumbrance is not an expenditure on, in gap, so. On exhibit five, you're not seeing incumbences on those expenditure totals, but in this exhibit you are. You're also seeing prior year incumbences reducing those expenditures. So on the budgetary basis, you can see the total revenue, actual six point one million, which was a positive variance of about twelve thousand. Total expenditures, five hundred and eighty, five million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, which was. Under your appropriations by eight hundred thousand, so you had an excess revenue over expenditures of an actual two hundred and sixty thousand and a budgetary variance, positive variance of eight hundred and fifteen thousand. Other financing sources, same as you saw in exhibit five, net increase basically of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So you can see your net change in fund balance in your general fund was four hundred thousand, just over four hundred thousand dollars, total unassigned fund balance, one point six million went up to two million. And you added that, a net change in some dollars. Exhibit eight is a budgetary schedule for the other major fund TIP district. You can see budgeted revenues, actual revenues, positive variance about a hundred thousand dollars, total expenditures were just under by. About thirty thousand dollars, so there was a net change in fund balance, again, of a hundred and forty thousand dollar increase, and primarily that's the result of those there positive variances. Exhibit nine and ten is fiduciary statements, these are your private purpose trust funds or. Excuse me, trust funds held for school, the school district, so you're acting as custodian. Those are pretty self-explanatory, not a whole lot of activity. The bulk of the report notes, the financial statement are provided to. Provide additional information of significant policies and principles, as well as material balances. We were required to, to talk more about material items, so if balance is small, it's not required to be discussed further than this. And of course, there are various disclosures that you are required to include, which you rely on us to help you assist in preparing these financial statements, and that is. That is common, and that is fine. The last exhibits I'll go through, and then we can just answer any more questions we have. Then I will jump to page fifty. Number eight.
System first.
So, exhibit seventeen, this is the, this is a detailed budgetary basis exhibit for your revenues, so you can see by function essentially. Your estimated revenues and your actual revenues, and you can see the various areas where the town had a positive or negative variance. So even though on exhibit seven, that we discussed, you had a positive variance on the revenues. This report shows that you have a negative variance of two hundred and eighty thousand, that's primarily because those other financing sources. Counted budgeted for more debt being issued, and basically they're under, under that estimate because of a couple things that didn't happen, so. What we're going to happen next, this year. Exhibit eighteen, same thing, but for your appropriations, expenditures, and encumbrances, so again, you can see, this visually shows you the encumbrances carried forward from two thousand and twenty. Total of just over forty-two thousand, your appropriations, your expenditures for the year. And remember, an expenditure by definition just means goods or services received during, on that date, so. Some stuff in January might apply to the previous year and so on, but not all this, not all the activity that you've done had, may have occurred. And not all the activity you planned for may have occurred by the end of December as well, so that's why you have your encumbrance to subsequent year column. That total was almost a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, your encumbrance for the beginning of the year, plus your appropriations, minus your expenditures, minus the encumbrances to the next year. That's how you get your ending positive or negative variance, and in this case, you're positive, you had basically a budget surplus of eight hundred thousand. And exhibit nineteen just runs through this again. It's a clean summary of what happened, so you started the year with unassigned fund balance of the one twenty-six million, voted to use a hundred and ten thousand dollars of that. Had a revenue shortfall of just under three hundred thousand, but an unexpended balance of appropriations of just over eight hundred thousand, so, so your net budget surplus of the five hundred thousand. You had increases in non-spendable and restricted fund balances, which by definition is a decrease in unassigned fund balance. And that is how you get to your ending unassigned fund balance of that, just over two million dollar figure.
It's twelve, it's twelve percent of our total, right?
Yes.
Recommended.
The, the policy is eight to fifteen percent with a target of twelve, a total of the seventeen million.
Okay.
Which includes the school, includes the county, all payment, all tax payments that the town collects.
The last page of the report too, I, I did put in a management letter, but it's, it's a general letter that just, basically, the, the point of this letter is to describe what a deficiency would be, and then to explain that there are none that we felt we need to report. As we do an audit, occasionally we may have, we may have recommendations to staff, certain staff as maybe in processing or something, you know, if it's minor, we just kind of go over with them, and it's not a, it's not something that indicates. Misappropriation, fraud, or any of that, and we don't feel necessary to put in a report, if we had. If we had issues that we were seeing that aren't being corrected, or just were significant in general, that certainly we feel the board would need to know, I would put that in, even if, even if staff were correcting something like that. But minor, minor details, we tend to just talk to, talk to the town as we're there. That's all I need to say. Any questions?
Just, just one, which is, we do a warrant article where we set up a trust fund for post-employment. Should we be tracking that by rights of having it shown as a contingent liability? Somebody retires and they have sick pay, we pay off the sick pay. Should we be tracking that and have it as a contingent, in a contingent liability piece?
So you do.
Rather than doing a warrant article for it.
So if I'm understanding you, so you have, you have a capital reserve fund for future payouts of vacation and sick, yeah. You do track, you do carry a liability for those running balances, so it's compensated absence is payable, and your, your current balance is about two hundred and twenty-two thousand?
Yeah, but it, I don't, does that have? Because we seem to have these big payoffs when people retire. And we think, rather than showing the expense. We're doing a warrant article in order to put an amount in. Because we, we're not carrying, if there's people here today, we're not carrying that, we're not showing it until the year we pay it.
You, you're carrying it all, because you're doing two different statements, you are carrying it on exhibit one and exhibit two, so. Each year, the town provides us with a list of all employees and all sick and vacation balances they have, and then we go into the policy, if there's a cap or so on, okay. You adjust for that, and you book that liability every year, so if it changes, people have, hold on to vacation or use vacation, it goes up or down. At the same time, you also have your expendable trust fund balance, which is your cash and investments of that trust fund, so you do have it both places, and as they pay out. If it's, if it's. Showing, if it's not in your budget and you're showing it out of the capital reserve fund, you're still showing expenditure in that.
Right.
Fund.
But I guess my question is, then why would you do a warrant article in order to put money in it? Why wouldn't you be showing it as the expense in the year, not as a warrant article at town meeting?
The warrant article, that's more of a, you're basically saying, putting aside the money for future payout, so, to put money into a trust fund, you have to have a warrant article, so. It's two, it's kind of two separate things, the town could just, or budget annually for, and then show the expense in the general fund, versus pulling it out of the trust fund.
Yeah, that's my recollection, is that we were trying to bolster, because we knew we had something.
I agree, but I guess that's why I'm saying, why wouldn't it be shown as a contingent liability in the expense? Why wouldn't it be showing as an expense during the year? We seem to take it out of the unexpended balance, basically. We lower the unexpended balance after the year is over, rather than carrying it during the year. So, I mean, it's, it's strictly an Excel spreadsheet, for all practical purposes, you know what's due, so you should be. Because people don't take it, it doesn't show as an expense.
No, because it's not a current.
Right.
Activity.
Right.
Shows, again.
It does show it, and has a long-term contingent, and it does, exhibit two, yeah. And it should, it should be in the, since we take it from unassigned balance, move it over with the warrant article, it should be in the hundred and ten thousand. That we spent out of the undesigned fund.
Right.
On exhibit nineteen, it should be in that.
Right.
I mean, we can, since we're tracking our exposure so closely, we should probably be able to do some forecasting, though, and maybe we work it into the budget instead of a warrant article, is that a?
Headway.
Yeah, because, I mean, because if you have such a good control over total exposure now, where I wouldn't say we've always had a.
So the problem is that if somebody retire, we don't know that they're going to retire, and we have this large payout. And that's what the fund covers, so we have the expense on this, and the strations that we want to cover, the additional expense, because we didn't know that they're going to retire.
So the choices are to have it in a budget year and hope you get it right, to have a revolving fund and to have it as a warrant article, why can't it be a revolving fund?
I don't believe, I'd have to look at the R S A, I'm not sure that that's allowable.
No, that's fine.
If it's allowable, there is no reason you couldn't have one.
Right, I mean, just, you know, like, when you live in financial accounting world, and.
But. You could, and you can budget it too, but, so you, you was gross budgeted, but you'd obviously estimate revenue to offset it, so that you're not raising taxes for this, but.
Oh, yeah.
Then you don't bring yourself up, because currently, as I understand, the board can, as, ages to expand out of that trust funds, and that's why you don't budget for it, but if you were to budget for it, then you, then you're constraining yourself to say. We budget fifteen thousand, we spent thirty, now we've got fifteen thousand dollar hit against there, you know, we gotta find somewhere else, so that's why you. Have a trust fund, so you don't have to budget for it, basically.
What do other towns do?
I was gonna say, maybe fifty-fifty on some, can you use it, having established, others just take the hit when they have a hit, they, not a good practice, but.
No, I was just curious.
I was gonna say, the tax fund, the tax funds are really good tax stabilization tool, so we mean it that way, it's good, it's accounting board and making sure it's transparent, so people know.
How much is in the trust fund compared to the current liability of?
I should, I don't know the answer.
I, well, there's not that, there's essentially enough to pay for. I don't have an exact figure, a few retirements.
Okay.
In the fund now, so we have to look at it and decide each year whether you need to raise money at town meeting again, maybe there's a year you take off. You don't necessarily have to put money in every single year, or the same amount even, it can be different amounts, depending on what we decide, you know, whatever the town thinks it needs to cover expenses. To cover expenses. And have a little cushion for the unexpected.
You should be able to roughly forecast and then, you know, if something dramatically changes, you're gonna have to adjust.
And your liability literally tells you what your worst case scenario would be, um with some fluctuation depending on how you go out your vacation in the next year. If something, if you get it upfront, there's a little extra exposure there, but. Um if everyone left at once, you'd have a total, you know, total exposure of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars was the point of that, carrying that liability, so.
Which is not huge.
And I think we have in the range of sixty thousand.
Any other questions?
Oh, I have one. I think we're doing pretty good, but what should we be watching out for?
Um, well, as you, you probably even well aware of the challenges in trying to forecast them this year, or, you know, their opinion here, I'm sure you're. I'm sure you're dealing with what, how much, you know, what buffer do you have to you provide in your budget based on fluctuation, you know, utilities and so on. Short-term costs, so uh beyond that. I think you're in, you see, you know, the town has recovered from, you know, three, four, or five years ago where you had some balances that were. Were not looking so strong, so you've kind of pulled those back up. So I think, um in that sense, and if you, if they even look at.
Where's the sewer fund at?
Sorry, that was.
Right, the sewer has a deficit of just under two hundred thousand dollars, which is a decrease in the deficit of ninety thousand, so. And now every, and I know the last few years it's been decreasing.
We should get a analysis to them if we're on track to our plan. So that they, the, I say, the budget.
We looked at that last year and it was a little slower, but it's still.
Yeah, but it'd be good to make sure the budget.
My, last year's analysis, I think it was six years instead of five years.
Yeah.
It was the projection.
But it was already painful enough that it wasn't.
Just as of last year, that's, yeah.
Um.
Because levelling goes up faster than we can catch up.
We're not even kidding. Um so Tim, you and I, and we, and I know you talked to other board members, um had a conversation about risk and so my question too was. Um when we had what I consider to be substantial fin- financial malfeasance by leadership in this town that drove us into the negative. And we didn't necessarily have folks who were capable of reading this audit report. Where is the flag and who waves it, right? So if you don't have a town manager, I'm not saying you, um but if you don't have a town manager at that time in place. And uh committees that can actually read this report where it actually makes sense. Um, who holds up the flag and says, whoa, don't you guys know that your ship is sinking? Because no one held up the ship is sinking flag back then. So where do you guys fall into that other than showing up and reading us this?
Right, well, so I.
You ha- I mean, other than, like, because if you can't read it, right, and you just can't understand it, because it's really not in layman's terms, like, I went to business school, yay me. Um, how do, how do you tell a town you really need to read page whatever?
Right. So we always give you, I mean, I know we were, we were reporting findings for, for a few years as far as just saying, here's. You know, your funds have been losing money, these, these X funds have been losing money. Um, I, beyond that, obviously the board always has a responsibility, um as their role of the entire governance, I think that. Um it does take some acknowledgement to say, okay, I'm not sure that I really know what's in these numbers and so. You know, you invite me to the board basically to present and then that's absolutely part of the processes. I can come to a board meeting every year and talk about this and. Beyond that, it's, yeah.
Cause I joined and I was like, why do you have findings? This is bad.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess I'll say, he's, he's here largely at my request. I've, I've been asking for a while and, and this year. You know, we, we've been in place and I would put forth the suggestion that every year we have a joint meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Where the audit is the main topic because that's the starting point.
Right, because the new share responsibility at the end of the day falls to the selector, we're the ones signing off on.
Right, but I think everybody in this.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And to have it in a public forum where anybody can come and read through and question and ask is an important.
Yeah.
Um thing and hopefully it's very boring and, you know, that's what you hope for, but you know. That means everybody's doing their job well.
I agree. It's something that I've always tried to do anywhere I've managed, so it's a plan of mine to make sure that the auditors come in. And talk through their audit on a manual basis.
So if you start losing ground, what number goes negative first? Is it, but it, but it's like, it's the unassigned fund balance, does that go negative or does that just go to zero and stay there and another number goes negative?
The, the first two signs I always, I always look for would be how well you are with your estimated revenues and how well, um obviously in your budget. If you're overspending your budget, that's good, that's the first sign that you're gonna be putting something to hold. But on the flip side, a lot of boards may not necessarily track this as much. If you're overestimating your revenues. In order to keep your tax rate, well, that's one way to keep your tax rate stable is to have all the estimated, estimated revenue sources. When you're not hitting those targets, that's gonna almost drop your fund balance faster. Like, I've seen, I've seen communities get into trouble. With errors in estimated revenues a lot faster than, than having too conservative a budget and not, and then still overspending. And that, because you can't do anything about making up revenues. You can stop spending, but you can't make your revenues if you're starting.
You can't make your, pay their tax bill and that becomes a spot where. You can, you can hit it real quick if your collections, you figure it's gonna be ninety seven percent and they're only ninety percent. That's gonna hit you quick.
Yeah, so you, you do have to, you do have to, you know, Ryan, the management to do good forecasting in the sense of, you know. This year it looks like we need a little bit bigger overlay or do you need, you know, the, you do have a couple of ways to try to soften those fluctuations.
Um I have a question on exhibit eleven, it's page forty nine. Enough to schedule the town's proportionate share of net pension liability to the New Hampshire retirement system. So when you, when we as a board agree um with an employee to fund their retirement through, say, I C M A. How does that get booked? Because this does specifically New Hampshire terms.
Right, that's not recorded as, as because that's, the town doesn't have the kind of management control they do over the retirement system.
So it artificially looks like we, I mean, I think to somebody who didn't know that we had done that. It would look like we decreased from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty one, when in fact. If you were to add the I C M A amount to the New Hampshire retirement system, I think that's the amount we increased. So. I'm sorry, that's not page, that's page forty nine in the P D A version dot.
I know, I'm looking at like.
I'm sorry, I'm using the electronic thing, I don't. I'm terrible. I don't do paper. Yeah.
Yeah, then that.
Is it a three-page difference?
Yeah. The, and remember too, the, the pension liability also fluctuates annually based off discount, you know, all the rates that the act rates are giving their. Rate of return of investments for the year, so prior to, you know, twenty twenty two, it was a, it's a big increase, so. Which re- reduces your liability, because they have a lot of assets obviously tied into the system, so as the assets grow, your liability decreases. So it's almost, you can track it with the ups and downs.
It's a market. Hey, is that a big enough thing that we ought to have it reflected somehow?
I don't think you can. These are set reports, right? That's not something we can book.
Right, no, the, the town is not. Like essentially manage.
I mean, it's booked within, but you wouldn't know which one is unless you. Kind of memorize what we do. That's why I asked the question, because I was like, I'm pretty sure this isn't really a decrease, I'm pretty sure it's because of the I C M A. Um and I C M A is the international, is it?
City manager.
City managers. So, and you have the choice to opt out if you'd like and choose to go with that. There's various reasons. To do it for your retirement. It's kind of like you might choose your company's retirement, you might choose to go with someone like Vanguard just wholesale, so. Um definitely not a problem. I just wanted to, you know, I, sometimes when a number lowers, people get, start to get excited and you're like, well, that doesn't reflect what you think it does. Uh if you had a page, a section to read, like say somebody says to you, I really, this is like more than I can share, right? What section would you recommend people read out of every minute?
Um. The most, I think the most useful first is to understand the funds the town has, so that's, so that's one before, so the fund types of major funds.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and again, the town can, town can add to some of these notes too if they, I mean, they have, they certainly have what's required. And you don't want to drown people in narrative.
Sure, yeah.
Um but town can, you know, modify this to their voice as well. So. Understanding what funds the town has first of all is important and then, I mean, I'm, I, the supplemental exhibits, which are all the ones in the back, are actually. The most detailed, so I think that's the place to jump to.
Yeah, no, and I think I'm just asking because like me, everybody here, but there are gonna be people who will eventually probably watch this video and. Maybe someone takes an interest and they aren't an accounting person, so it's, I think part of being open and transparent is giving people the tools and the public to also check up on us.
Management letter songs, first one.
I like the management letter. I mean, I read the management, like, I kind of skip to the management letter, but that's me. Um and then I, and then I roll around and you can see I've obviously got notes because, well, you know, I think this stuff is fun. Um so there's a, let's see, it's gonna be the wrong page, so it's somewhere around page forty six, her, her. It's the notes um to the financial statements and it has the sensitivity of total O P E B liability.
Yep.
Um so, how useful of a tool is this? Because I, every time I look, I'm like, nothing goes up or down on like one percent, but I know one percent you can multiply and get like seven, right?
Yeah.
So. It's the sensitivity tool.
Forty, forty-one number.
Well, this is forty-four.
If you click up in the box that says fifty.
Page number, what page, we're looking for forty, I can't.
Okay, I was gonna say, or you can click up there on where it says your number, click and put in the number and hit enter.
Well, yes, except that it's not the same. That says forty-six and I want forty-one.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm on page forty-six, that's what I'm saying.
Uh yeah, it's an answer. So it's. The O P E B and, and in a lot, some respects the pension, but the O P E B especially. These are just standards that were implemented, you know, five, five, six.
This was one of our findings because we weren't compliant and we had to hire somebody to do these calculations for us. So obviously, if it's exciting enough to hire someone, I want to know it does something for us as a tool.
It just tells you, uh.
No.
No.
No, it just.
It's a requirement that you.
And it's one of those.
So there's nothing, no, I mean, it's like debt to equity, right? Like, it's not anything cool like that. It tells you nothing exciting.
It tells you the, the fact that you offer health insurance, you have a long-term liability related to that.
Which we know. I was hoping I was missing something.
Other questions?
I promise you, that was all of them.
Alright, thanks for the report.
You're welcome.
Um. Any objection if we review the twenty twenty-two budget expenditures before we talk about budget goal?
No objection. Nope, not at all.
We can do that. We put it in that order in case the selector.
Yeah, because I thought you were less of that.
Their thought, but not that they can't do the budget as well, so. If we can do that, um worked with Elisa today and we. We updated a little and then we highlighted some of the questions and concerns we saw might be coming, so.
Yeah, it's the one place that, yeah.
Do you have that to share or do we just pass it out or?
I passed it out to everyone. I do not have it to share.
Do you want to narrate it?
I think we'll type, email, have Elisa do a lot of it, but you know, the first couple there, that's. Pretty easy. Anything you say, see that says paid at year end, there's adjustment coming at the, at the end of the year to, to make that happen. Contracted services went over a little, that was the, the town manager, the M R I, for the interim town manager. Um I highlighted the internet section, we're over a little bit in internet there. I don't know. Why that went over, but I am right now in negotiations with First Light, who has internet. Equipment here to start paying a lease and to start paying their energy usage. So we're gonna be finalizing that contract hopefully over the next month and should be in place before next year. So we'll be getting a little bit of revenue for that and then I'm working with First Light and Hub sixty-six. Looking at internet costs and trying to reduce our overall internet costs going into next year, so we'll be working on that fine. Um I C M A news are paid at year end. Um travel went over a little bit with me coming on. I don't know why it was budgeted, but I, I have had. Meetings around the, around the area and trainings and then I'm also on the, on the broadband committee, which has caused me to have to travel, but. We're still in April a few times working on that, but I also think it's good for the town. We're, we're hopefully moving forward on expanding broadband, so.
So one question, we, are we fully staffed for whoever's accounted for and personnel in this budget category?
As of right now, townwide, we're fully staffed except for one police officer.
Okay.
That did kind of happen throughout the first six to seven months of the year, but about midsummer, we became fully staffed. So there are a few places that the, the staffing budget will be a little bit over what was budgeted, but we are now. We're not over, under, but we are fully staffed at this point except for one police officer and. We're gonna have a retirement soon, but we're already working on hiring that in the D P W position.
Okay. Um.
This thing's the first time in how many years?
Well, that was COVID.
That was long before COVID.
It just got worse.
Um deputy town clerk salaries, there's. There's, I don't want to know if I want to call it miscommunicated, but some things were coded a little differently with the transition from a part-time town clerk. To a full-time town clerk, so if you look at those, they're, they're off in their perspective line, but if you add them together, we're still on budget. For, for the two positions together.
Is it a matter of them not being budgeted for correctly or did we not book it correctly?
Did not book it correctly.
So that can be fixed.
But we're looking at having it, like other departments, having a full-time. Line instead of breaking the mark, because now we have a full-time.
Okay.
So on, on that note, we changed that from part-time to full-time?
Yes.
Um any comment on how that's working?
I think it's going great. I didn't, I wasn't here before that happened, but it's, it's been really nice to. To have her there all the time, to have someone full-time. You know, the lines are moving fairly well.
You have two full windows now versus one where you have a big wrap around the Roman people out into the hallway.
Have you had an opportunity doing the cross-training that I know you're planning to do, but it's been recent?
Cross-training.
Well, you were talking.
Positions.
Well, people were talking about just having various positions in, in the office. By having a full-time person, you'd have the opportunity to cross-train people, so when somebody's out.
Um we're just starting to work on that. We've had, you know, we have newer personnel that are learning their position.
Right.
So, I mean, there is talk, Chantel is newer here at the D P W as the assistant. We're talking about cross-training her. On A P payroll, some of those things, so when Marion is out, we can.
Right.
Not as a bee even keep working and, so we will be doing some of that. Um there's a little bit of talk with. Tax collector stuff with the R S A's and the way that works. We have some legal nuances to work through on what people can do and can't do in the office, but we'll be, we'll be working through that, but we are definitely looking at. Cross-training and some succession planning and the things we need to do to make sure we're strong if something happens or.
Like. Can you physically take a check for me or do I have to walk it to the green box instead? Which is a little bit silly, but.
But some of that's legal, I.
It's, it's, it's New Hampshire law. We have some very special laws.
I will tell you right now, I called the attorney on that one and he said, no, she's technically not supposed to, and I hung up and said, take the check. Deal with the problem if we have a problem. Take the check, put it in the box, the tax collector and input it when they get here. But we will work out those nuances. I will figure out those problems so she can take it and input it and move on, so we'll, we'll get that done.
And you have done some cross-training, um like the assessors office covers some finance, I think, but we already.
Yes, the assessing office, she um does some of the payroll functions, not all the way to the cutting of checks yet, but all the data entry.
So I think you've got a good story.
And we are doing it across the staff. Um we can get to it a little bit more in detail as we move through the budget process, but one. One change I started to make here was we had our land use community development person and the building inspector. I'm slowly merging them into one, I'll call it a division, if not truly a department, but. They work together, they're gonna cross-train to help each other and Rob is now. You know, in a sense overseeing Liam, but working with him, they work closely on a daily basis. So we'll be, we'll be doing those cross-trainings as well, so we have, we have a lot of people that can do what we need to do. You want to explain the postage one?
I did, I did. Nine hundred and fifteen dollars that was for mailing of tax bills, which does not belong in elections, it belongs in the finance curve. So that has to move over. Um everything else, it looks like they have renewal notices that are being sent out. Which are most of the money. And then any online registrations are mailed, but that would be offset by a dollar revenue that's collected on each one. So the dollar count really covers the postage and the envelope.
So supervisor, the check is paid at the year end. Um bank fees, I questioned this one. I wanted to make sure we weren't having a lot of late fees and those types of things. It's not, it's all the iCloud services and electronic services that we take fees for to the bank.
And it's currently showing a negative balance. The previous report had one that goes over and I think that there's a, there was a transfer done that was incorrect. We have to fix that and I think it's going to be a small balance used for the invoice card fees.
The audit went over a little bit. That was a G A S V seventy-five audit that just cost a little bit more. We went through.
Looking at the, the election expenses. You've got that, a big one coming up. And from what you read about in the paper, there's trouble in. Many places where people are spending a lot of time trying to cause towns difficult.
Well, the election expense line is for physical things. As opposed to people.
We've got ballot clerks.
Well, ballot clerks, that is, they're over already. Um, there's, there's a bit of difficulty deciding how much time, well, we don't know when we're budgeting, how much time they're gonna spend at any one election. And we might end up spending more hours than we anticipate. We do our best.
I, I do think the ballot clerks, you know, they're running relatively lean on who's actually clerk, you know, I mean, there's not like a collection of backup people, so. I would say that line probably could use a little. Review and increase.
Except that next year we will have town meeting.
Well, right.
So we have to look at how much we do for each election and kind of adjust.
Oh, yeah, true.
It's this session we're preparing for next year's election.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we're going under this year. Don't worry, you can balance it out by the time you get to the subtotal line.
I was gonna say.
I think I, I'm very comfortable.
And managing the budget is truly looking down to that bottom line, making sure that we don't go.
I mean, thirty-nine percent is a very reasonable amount at this point in the year because you technically have three months left.
Yeah, we should be, I mean, and I'm gonna say that conclusively, we should be twenty-five-ish. Some things I'll get paid at the end of the year, some things I ask department heads to hold on till we get closer to the end of the year, so we can manage that budget if we need to, so. Things will be changing over the next few months, but as long as. That's kinda what I do when I run through this. I look at everything, but. If we're close to that percentage, I don't question it too hard until something jumps out at me. Travel, tax class and professional development. Um. Again, we've had new people and we can say that a lot and a lot of these I have been pushing and a lot of people have been pending trainings. We're coming out of COVID, trainings are coming back. There's a lot of online options, but people are figuring that out too and those used to be free online classes now cost money, so we're. We're, we're getting all that figured out, but I am pushing professional development and we're, we're continuing to do that. I guess the next, the next part there is, those are our computers, library. So I mean, we're, we have a purchase pending. We're working with Simpress right now to update a lot of our older computers that we need to do. Um, on this one, I'm working with them, but we may make this purchase. Almost a dual purchase December, January, cuz if we get more computers. And have them all programmed at some time, it saves the town money instead of trying to program them at separate times, so. If I can do a December purchase, January purchase and have them all programmed in December, then it's gonna save the town some money. So I think we're looking at that for this next couple of years. Um, again, a paid year end for the trustee of trust funds. Contracted services. Um. This is assessing and we had an encumbrance. We're working to get back on track for things I didn't get done during COVID. That's. That's the explanation for that one. Uh, another year in, now I'm down, end up planning and zoning. Um. There's nothing spent on that mapping, but I have talked with Rob the last couple of weeks on some different mapping programs that we may wanna do that'll help the town. We did get a bid on one we thought would be a great project and it was a lot more expensive than I. Wanted to pay. We actually had a good talk today of whether or not tax payer funds should be spent on it. Is it? Is it worth what that costs? Are we actually using it? So we're, we're talking through a few things, but I, I do believe that we will be either. Spending that five hundred dollars or asking to encumber that to do a little bit bigger project next year, but to update some of our mappings. The one we looked at was the plan and metric layer and the last time that's been updated was two thousand, so it's way out of date. They wanted almost fifty thousand dollars to update it. I don't know if it gets used that much, but there may be a way that we can. We can start slowly updating it as we use it at a, a lower cost.
So there's two mapping. I, I'm assuming it's O one plan and O two zoning.
Yeah, there's also another place in the budget I saw when I was going through preparing, so we'll be. We'll be coordinating those a lot, a lot better and making sure that they're used for, for appropriate projects.
And s- something that caught my eye is going back one, one or two spots here. For the overlays, this has no. Money in it.
Oh, good. Oh, we're not budgeting for overlay. It's not something you typically budget for. It always started when we started having.
We got in such trouble.
I, well, that's because the overlay is supposed, should be used in your calculation of your tax rate and it wasn't. And then the tech, so that's, that is basically because the formula to figure out the tax rate that the budget committee was aiming for did not include. Um, a couple of pieces. It was skewed, so it didn't include the overlay of veterans' credits, veterans' tax credits. So in order to not forget it, it was started to be budgeted for, but that's not typical. So we stopped doing that. We went back to the typical way.
Well, we, yeah, what I've done in Claremont is we budgeted for it coming into the budget season and then we pull it out at the last minute. So it goes away and you budget nothing and then D R A tells you what it should be. Hopefully, your guess was close and.
And the money.
It worked out that way. If you don't plan for it, like Elisa said, then you can say, you know, we're aiming for this tax rate and you get a lot bigger one than you expected because overlay comes in, but. So we'll try to, we'll try to guesstimate for that.
What is overlay?
That's the.
For abatement, is the, for assessment abatement, some things at D R A.
We have quite a few things that we've voted at town meeting over the years, different tax credits we give for veterans aged related.
In the financial overview that I, I created and was providing to the budget committee, we'll do again this year. It has the tax rate calculation and it does have an estimate in there for those things. So you'll see it in the paperwork later on in the process.
And for some historical context, part of why it had, we for a while had to have it in our budget is because we had a deficit and you can't overspend your budget. We had to make sure that any potential credits there were accounted for, so, cuz we had zero cushion. Right.
Got it.
And so now we're doing it the more traditional standard way. Uh, now that we are out of the hole that we were in before. The overlay didn't get us into the hole, but once you're in a hole, you can't use the traditional methods to keep track of your potential tax credits.
You really don't wanna make another mistake in our area of all.
Right. Cuz it, cuz it doubles up the problem.
Sure did, yes.
If you don't do it right, you didn't budget for it and you don't collect revenue. Got it, but.
You're actually double sad. Yeah, we don't wanna go there again.
So in the general government building, the contracted services went over a little bit cuz we held on to the cleaning service longer than we expected before making the transition to our facilities person, which we. We have hired. He's, I think he said right now, he's trying to spend two days of cleaning a week and three days of maintenance a week. Doesn't always happen. Sometimes it's three days of cleaning, but, you know, he's been doing. Quite a bit. I don't know if you guys noticed, he gets bad mouthed some too, but.
Yes.
I went in the community building today with him talking and he's painted. Two of the four walls in the community building. He doesn't spend the whole week painting in there, but he'll do, he'll do a little bit here and there and.
And some of the sheet rock is reappeared in there.
The sheet rock.
I can see he's picking it up.
He fixed the flag. He painted as much as he could.
Yeah.
We'll be sure to add that to the Whitney building, rebuilding project that they could get a lift in to paint the whole thing.
I know someone who can run.
But that was great and that was noticed and reported.
Yeah.
In November of two thousand twenty.
And I did talk about that. I have a big thing with, you know, not that we don't have to fix everything, but. Let's concentrate as we move forward on the things that people see and that, that people see that things are getting done, so. The flagpole, those things, the community building, let's, let's clean those up and make them nice and then we can work on the behind-the-scenes stuff.
And you've explored a ticketing system possibly.
Oh, we continue working on that. Um, right now it's working, so.
Yep, that's, small town, it works. I'm not gonna ask any questions. If you need a fancy widget, you get it. You don't, you don't.
So, yeah, that's where we are at on that. We have transitioned over to, he does all the cleaning in the town and he's doing all the maintenance as well.
So, so then the contracted services are done?
We're clean.
We're clean.
Um, property liability insurance, like it said, there was some added equipment that took that over just a little bit.
Ready to go? But lost track. When to go?
Insurance not otherwise allocated.
Sadly, that doesn't help.
What is page three?
Another general government as we get there, hydro maintenance year end and then cable access was paid for two years.
Well, no, it gets paid twice a year. So we have one payment done and we have one.
One to go.
Once we get built.
Police personnel part-time. I wanted to point this out cuz we made a strategic move on this one, so this one should come in under budget, but. Our pressing guard police assistant that also helps clean police guard, those types of things. Left at the end of the school year and we purposely did not hire again till the beginning of the school year, so we had. About three months, three and a half months there where we did not have anybody on staff and that, that was on purpose. Did that for budgetary purposes. We didn't, didn't think we needed someone just to come in and watch the police car. Police health and safety, just wanted to point out that's for mental health checkups and. Um, I do believe the police chief uses that near year-end for some of his physical fitness work, so that, that should be spent.
One question I had this year, that is that service being offered to the other emergency services?
Um, there are some. We're gonna be doing some research cuz I, I believe in. Some of this went in. I don't know about the physical fitness one, but we can, we can look at that, the mental health.
There's a, the mental health one specifically.
This went in, insurance did not cover that, but I believe Primex does now and I know there's some other. There's some other debriefing services that are available, so we'll, we made sure that they have.
I guess I'll just, I think it's a service that we should offer to absolutely, pretty much all of, any of our staff.
I know we've done a debriefing this year with the fire department, so, and those services are available.
Right.
Make sure they are. Um, the ambulance one, I think it's worthy to note that we got a lot after your bill from Lebanon than we expected and I think that was just one response. It was per the contract on a per month basis, so it was definitely higher than we thought it was gonna be.
Are we, on the, um, revenue side, how is our revenue matching up?
Um, we can talk about that a little bit better. We're, we're doing better than we did and we just made a. Transfer to a, a different company where it's a little easier for people to pay. Through credit cards and online and. So hopefully that brings in a little bit more. I wanna say we're in the thirty percent range, which sounds bad, but I think it's actually decent for EMS.
Yeah, is that the company that we moved to who actually goes after Medicaid and Medicare and makes them pay? Cuz that was one of our big issues before, we weren't getting the government payments. You're pretty much guaranteed to get a few thumps in a couple of times.
Yeah, you'll get some. They, they don't pay a lot, so they'll pay some.
Wow, getting like none.
Is this essentially saying that Lebanon is responding more frequently to calls than Enfield is for our original expectations since the third line item is lower?
Yes.
Well, and we, we, I think we have more calls for service overall.
And we have a lot of calls during the day.
Which we have no coverage.
Makes it harder.
Cuz we don't have a full-time ambulance like Canaan has. Though, is, are we doing any work with Canaan? They're doing a lot of contracting. For the other small towns.
I don't know that we are right now. We have an ambulance contract with Lebanon.
When is that up?
Uh, we just signed it, so I'd have to look and see what it is, but we just signed it this year.
And are our calls increasing compared to last year?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but we can definitely talk about that as we. Do you know it?
I have all of the data. Actually, I think, I go through the data every single month, so I have a whole spreadsheet and I track what's what, so I can bring that.
We can look at it and we can.
It's interesting to see if it's, if it's just a matter of who's responding or if there's a general increase in the number of responses.
I can break it down to day of the week and all different kinds of things, so, yeah. Every single day that we, that there is an ambulance call in town in Enfield, I am pressed.
Day that I wanted to set up to review the EMS and police. Budgets and that would be a great day to, to dig into that data a little bit more.
I think it's also, I hope, um, folks might consider just looking at the break-even point where. Full-time is more cost-effective potentially than, and I don't know when that would, day would come, but are we getting to that threshold where a full-time person. Paramedic here on site would be. A better choice than Lebanon.
No.
No?
I can, just looking at your numbers, no, you'd have to double that for one.
And I mean, and it's the cost, right? Yeah, yeah.
So between line items. So between line items, one fifteen and one ten combined, we're at ninety-one percent spent of the total budget. So we'll, we'll overrun. Unless nobody calls the ambulance for the next three months.
Yeah, no, we will on a, like I said, on a line basis, you know, Dr. Richard again today and he, he watches this closely. Looking at that subtotal line at the bottom and.
Right, understood, but I'm saying like personnel, viewing Lebanon as personnel, we're gonna overrun the Lebanon plus Enfield personnel.
Yeah.
So where is he cutting the money?
You don't have to cut the money. We just.
I don't know.
You cannot provide a service.
Right, but he's not that far behind on his target with twenty-three percent of the subtotally.
No, but a lot of the other ones are.
With the uniform and safety gear, he hasn't spent.
And that's one of the things he talked about today. Do we need to buy more clothes if we're overspending another line? Probably not unless it's absolutely needed.
Yep.
So. He'll continue to watch those. The diesel fuel one was just highlighted for me. I wanted to. A question that. The zero-year-to-date actual and. Number for diesel fuel, so.
Do we have a diesel engine still? Do they? Did we, did we get a hybrid?
Yeah, this seems to suggest nothing is running on diesel.
I'd say it's not. I'd say that if we're not punching the number in, that's a little happy pump, maybe.
Well, and with it being down for a while, I don't know what happened, but we will be talking about that.
Where do we get diesel off?
So repairs and service contracts. One pump test performed. We did decide to cut back on a little bit of testing this year because of the drought. We didn't, it was prudent to. Use a lot of water just for testing unless it had to be done. Um, clothing was a big one. Those are for their actual bunker here at the fire department. They didn't have any new people going. I think we have a couple more joining now, so maybe we'll spend some of that soon, but it is something we're looking at and talking about a possible encumbrance if we don't. So we don't have to budget as much next year.
Are, are there still recruiting challenges?
There always are, but I, I think things are starting to turn around. There's some good momentum at the fire department. I believe as we move forward, the excitement builds around the public safety building that's coming, that'll increase our ability to recruit. It also will increase some conversations with the. Emergency services as a whole and how we do some things.
And we will be able to offer training here, which means it's not a hardship to send somebody further afield to do the training. Not all of the training.
So and they're doing a lot of in-house training. It's on here somewhere too, but if you look at the training line, it's a little bit low.
That training line that everybody.
They've been doing a, a lot of in-house training. I think some of this was budgeted to send some of the people up, so not having new people also.
And I should have highlighted the prior year.
Yeah, yeah.
There was something that was booked there that should have been booked.
Without a grant.
Grant line, so it. Yeah, it was just booked in the wrong place. I will check.
You know the size of that arrow?
The size of the arrow? Most of that.
Yeah.
So the prior year encumbrance is an amount that was specifically set aside. Or specific items. So something was booked there that should not have been. And I think there was some confusion about. CIP projects from the prior year. Which are not a prior year encumbrance because they're not incumbent funds.
We were gonna unencumber ourselves.
We're going to take it out of that line and put it someplace else. When I get into the detail.
We didn't spend it there.
Right.
And same with the next one. The special projects. Um, that was the sign that we've purchased, the little sign for the community building that'll be installed soon. It should be placed in the Gopher Grant line and it was coded to the special projects line instead. So we'll, we'll make that adjusting entry.
And how much was the grant?
The grant was for fifty. The sign was a little over twenty-seven thousand that we spent.
We have to give the rest back?
No, because we spent the rest on the striker cot that was on the CIP. We spent every penny plus a little bit.
That's good.
We don't get back much.
So.
And then.
You know that, that answer, how that works? It was, I think it was the transition to the new software and prices came in a little different than we expected.
Yes, I think that's.
So it is a contract, but we were in transition and the fees came back a little bit different than we thought.
Cause that's up, that's also gonna overrun quite a bit.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you on the services line?
Yeah, dispatch services.
Yeah.
Is that a monthly fee?
No, I think, no, I think it's paid in the.
Okay, okay, got it. Okay, okay. It's not like it's gonna go up to hundred and twenty-five.
And we're locked into that as long as we want to stay with piano or just that. We, we don't get to pick who we just use.
Okay, so then if the difference is two thousand, I wasn't, I was thinking this is gonna keep going up to.
Oh, it probably will.
Well, no, she said.
I think it'll keep going up.
Sorry.
So that's almost many grants for a game.
Yeah, there, there is a transfer that's coming out of the contracted services line that should, it's about nineteen hundred dollars. That has to be transferred to the. Service contracts and building buildings where the cleaning was.
So office supplies, that was due this changing office staff and.
I, I think you're.
And there's a coding changing.
Everything significantly more on office supplies across the board though, and I don't know the percentage increases overall, but if you go to buy something, it's much, much more.
It's more and then when we get new people, we have to buy stuff for the new people.
I back up to the survey and engineering line. They've not been expended at this point.
Yeah, I have a note on my other budget to talk to Jim.
So is that money that will be expended on the. Enfield granite property?
No.
What will this money be spent on?
That's for highways.
Okay.
Roads and streets. So I'm, I'm talking to him about what we could get done, if there's anything we can get done for that this year. If not. It may be something to encumber any of next year to start some engineering on Bob Road or something like that where we're not. Not tapping other sources to get that money. So we'll be having that discussion. I have it noted on my this year's budget sheet to have that discussion. The contracted services is invasive species inventory. That's where we budgeted that. I don't believe we've gotten any bills yet.
No, we have, we have one bill that we've saved.
We have one bill. So that project should be, should be wrapping up by December. So we should start getting bills for that.
Please. Cause it's not gonna go back. I'm just, don't get excited. It's not done.
But hopefully the inventory.
The inventory piece, yeah.
Done and then we have to move into actual maintenance.
Yeah.
Pavement maintenance, that's happening right now. If you go by Phil Berry's group, they relay and answer that.
And we got some extra money.
We did get some extra money. I'm trying to remember if I had, it's about the same amount, hundred and seventeen.
Twenty-two thousand.
Hundred and twenty-six thousand. That came out of the state budget for road maintenance. Which came with the stipulation that it was not allowed to offset your budget in any way. So it has to be additional road work. We accepted it. I'm sure we're gonna be encumbering it. We don't have time to expend it in the next three to four months. So we'll encumber that into next year and hopefully. Get twice as many road projects done. Um, the good thing with that going in. Knowing we have that money for next year already, we can put out a bid in January, February timeframe to do some spring paving where you get better prices than you do. Going after town meeting.
Is, is close from the street already, is it, you're done paving there?
I don't know.
Okay, cause they went right down the middle and I've had people.
No.
Asking me and I'm like.
I'm not even. They brought a shim.
We did that one time. Lock Haven was like that.
So they, they've still got manual work to do. That's why it's the rest of the with.
How are we doing on our, uh, stockpile of, um, cover risers? That's always a good question. That's the, that's where they pave them over if we don't move fast. And they're hard to get sometimes.
Let me get that in Hillsborough. And they set them out.
This is probably a hot topic, but. The whole deal with like top coating or whatever we call it.
Can we not shim?
Can you not do that?
We'll have that discussion.
Because like, the number of people on my road who have complaints.
Yeah.
Is significant.
Yeah.
And in my opinion. The top coating they did actually made it way worse.
No, you enjoyed it.
Yeah.
Okay. Lock Haven is the same problem.
It's way worse. It sounds like a, like anything driving down the road now sounds like a tractor trailer.
Yeah.
And chunks were coming off left and right this winter. You can't convince me that this is to save and solve.
We have a transition. It was, yeah, we, we have a transition coming up in a couple of months.
That's what they said. That was the explanation, I think.
They told me it was to save and solve.
And to make it better for plowing. And I'm like, well, you're plowing up the thing we just paid for.
Right.
Yeah.
It, it's.
No, we'll have that conversation.
Yeah.
And strategically waiting till the right time. But yeah, no, I'm a. We'll, we'll fix them and fix them right.
Like at this point, I must have grinded the whole thing off and. Ah.
Maybe add extra money.
I think that's a question of priorities and budgeting.
What?
I can't imagine Jim would. Incoat that road without purpose.
It looked fine. And then after the top coat, there was a couple of cracks in it. Maybe it wasn't totally flat. And then after they skin coated it, it looked horrible. And then the first time the plow went by, when I was hiking, there was chunks of asphalt flying like on the sides of roads.
It's something towns have done. For some time and it's, yeah, it's a money-saving effort to. Be able to shim in the low spots and that's where the ice thing comes in. If you have low ruts and stuff, then.
You're picking them all down the road.
If you, we can spend a little bit more on plan ride to shim it and then overlay it so it's smooth.
And there wasn't any ice issued the year before?
They did a very nice test on Jones Hill Road where they did the reclamation and one like, and they did it side by side. It was kind of interesting. And so. Know what the outcome of that was, but definitely worked.
Yeah. No, there's ways to do it. You don't always have to reclaim or.
Yeah, no, and. I just remember him describing it. So there's obviously they've done some work on it, but maybe they also need some support for us to say, instead of paying for it essentially. One and a half times or twice.
Yeah.
If we're once.
We'll be working on a. A longer term plan with. Better costs of coming into budgeting. We know exactly how much we can get for what and we can make that decision. Probably not this year. So the MSW is a fuel increase adjustment. We were laughing this morning going, I don't know how we didn't have to send anything for that, but we haven't yet. And we'll, we'll just keep watching that. It's good to have it in the budget and hopefully we don't have to.
If they don't charge us, we don't pay them.
Who's they?
Um, the seller. Who is that contractor?
It's up this next year. We have six months of this current contract. So we'll be. We'll be working on that too. We'll have to look at. How we wanna provide trash service and then RSP it out. I don't wanna say we will, but on a lot of those, especially curbside, you're probably not gonna get many more people to bid in this one. But we can look. Yes.
Uh, did I miss the aggregate and fill line?
They're doing that right now.
You said, you've got to note there's this crusher on site. I'm just curious.
That's good. It was going when you showed up today there.
Oh, that's why. It's not just for purchasing aggregate and fill, but creating it with commercial. And we're doing the crushing now, so there's gonna be an expense for the crushing.
Can we bring our own boulders and drop them? Now that's true.
Jim, we do pay.
Do you take large boulders?
They're great, yeah, but yeah.
He does like that line.
Yeah, so I don't know. What's the status on the chipper channel here?
The chipper has been totaled. We got forty-six thousand from Primex for a chipper that's probably gonna cost us a little over eighty thousand dollars to replace.
If you see someone shoving a large spring in their debris, maybe like harden over them because.
There was a large spring in it?
A very large metal coil.
Yeah.
I think that's worth a picture than the, uh, Henry Ford.
Yes.
It's a very, very, very expensive.
Since the metal dumpster is like right behind you.
Yeah, I mean, and it might have been an innocent, you thought you were gonna take some piece of the metal and you had a hot moment, you threw it all in, but then. When you grab, right where the grab, it goes in together, so.
What happened? I'm really.
Oh, the metal spring went into the chipper.
Large piece of metal went through the chipper.
It was a coil.
Maybe not all the way through.
Maybe not all the way.
The knives failed to shred it.
Into the chipper.
It totaled the, it totaled the engine.
I think it's a good idea to put it in the week, on the monthly newsletter one day.
We did.
We did.
Did it picture?
Well, I didn't have a picture.
I don't think we have a picture of it.
I bet you could have the guys tell you what it looked like and you could pick one off the internet. Hi, I'm this long and a shark is this long. I don't go through the chipper.
There were no pictures either.
They went and looked at the chipper thoroughly, so.
And it's gone now?
Yes.
Yes, Primex.
That's too bad.
They took it and they totaled it. We did get a. We got a bid for thirty-something thousand dollars to fix it. And Primex said, no, we're not paying to fix it because we're. Not certain, but afraid that if you fix it, something else may catastrophically go and hurt somebody.
Right.
Now, how old was this chipper? I'm gonna say it was seven or eight. I'm just a little, but they. What's the life of that chipper?
If you take care of it.
We had at least another decade.
Yeah, if you take care of it, you sharpen the knife and you dump it through.
It could have lasted ten years easy.
You can get a long time out of it.
Sure we got it.
So on the solid waste, as you can see, those are just pass-through accounts. Direct assistance, I wanted to highlight this. It looks like we're not spending anything. That doesn't mean we're not helping anybody. There's a lot of government money out there. There's a lot of. Places to send people and. Cantel's doing a, a good job and it's something that we. We often don't spend a lot of the money.
Because in the past, we have spent.
Yeah.
Those two months, yeah.
We have, but most of the people that I've heard about that have come in, we're able to get them assistance from somewhere and we're gonna continue to try.
Yeah, right.
Who's administering that force?
Cantel, she took Diane's place.
Do we typically not pay the intergovernmental welfare payments until?
No, they're all paid.
They are? Did I just?
You don't get the wrong call.
Am I? Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, I was like, oh yeah, no, remaining zero. Okay, happy, happy. But we, I thought we paid those right away.
It used to be that we paid them only at the end of the year and then we started paying some of them earlier, but.
I think it's a good practice.
Easier to get it done sooner. Um, and then we don't. Put things aside and then slip past us.
The patriotic per. Purposes line was flags.
Where the flags came from?
Yes.
I have a question on parks and recreation.
Okay.
So. I'm sure most people here know that during the budget season, we passed narrowly passed increasing that position to full-time last year.
Which one?
You mean funding?
Parks, parks and recreation director.
Funding.
We increased funding narrowly for full-time. With the, and at least I assume the intent was. Um, to partially offload people who are volunteering, organizing recreation activities. I'm hearing grumblings. That the rec director is not wishing to be involved in certain.
You can't have a personal conversation in this meeting. That's a personal conversation that goes down.
All right, so.
You, it's not a permissible use of the meeting.
So then.
If you have a personal issue, you need to go directly to Ed, but you can't talk about a person in a position, especially when you can single out in a meeting like this.
All right. So.
We can't tell you that he was.
With the scope of.
He was charged with not doing the work, but bringing all those groups. Together.
Yeah.
So.
So like with, with how we face, for the budget goals for next year, it would be helpful for me to understand what the scope of that role is. And reassessing the.
And we can talk about it a little more. It is an ever-changing position right now and it's. It's developing really what this person's gonna do.
I would say though, it, it, the select board when we discussed it, I think it's fair to say that. One of the, we went through many presentations over time and the presentation that was given was that some of these community type pieces that were kind of floating out there. Would be considered for incorporation. So that's something, you know, you probably look back at some of the minutes and see them. So I'm sure, is that fair to, right, to characterize it? Cause you guys thought, well, we said we had the intent to kind of change the position. You guys funded it, so.
We are and we're, we're tiptoeing right now because. If he does one thing on one day, he gets in trouble for doing something that someone else did. And if he doesn't do something, then he's getting, so you should have done this. So it's really a community balance of how we're gonna do this. We're not gonna come in as staff and just start taking over everything.
There's so five oh one C three and town employee and. Multiple municipalities that were a part of that conversation and a part of the recreation commission. So if I could just put that piece in there.
Yeah.
There, there are different elements, so it's not just recreation department. There's a five oh one C three, there's multiple five oh one C threes. And so part of it is bringing just the communication in under the umbrella, but.
Right, so then.
There are boundaries with those relationships as well.
I've been sending everybody just to talk to Ed because Ed is the leader of that portion of our organization. And I think one of the things we have to do for our employees here, especially when they're new, is have, give them a little bit of a chance to get onboarded and. To establish themselves. And it's really easy to say like, well, we thought you were gonna do this, right? And it happens in everywhere in our, our, right? And so just going to their leader and. Letting their leader handle it so that they get a little bit of grace in the, in the onboarding session.
Right, so that maybe the request to. Is clarification on scope.
I think that's fair.
A little bit.
And that, and not just within the budget committee, but like let people know what the scope is so that. Not everybody in town has a different opinion and then gets upset when it doesn't happen.
Well, we may just have to have that big conversation. I'm getting it from both ends too, that you're trying to take over this. If I say here's the scope and so we just have to have some clarity and some communication as a group of. What we're doing and we're working on some of the stuff. The grumbling behind the scenes is making it worse. So if you get any of those. Send people to myself and we'll try to work through this.
Yeah.
I wasn't here either during those conversations, so. Part of this we're making up as we go and we're knocking to people and we're getting conflicting stories of what it should be, though everybody had a different idea of what it should have been.
Right.
And we're trying to build a position.
I'm sure that was the case, even when we voted for it in the budget committee, that everybody had a different idea of what it was. But which.
Which relative to the budget committee?
Whether you fund it or not.
Right. And now, and now I'm saying is for me to make my decision on funding, I would like to understand the scope of the. Recreation part.
And I think, so the one thing I'll say is the last year where we made three sort of. Large. Decisions on positions, there were two expanded to full time from part time and one fully new position. There was one fully new DPW, the town, the assistant town clerk became full time and this position became full time. So those were the sort of the three big changes that were made last year.
Had a fourth one, the change in the decisions we decided to make in DPW to get them fully staffed. That in my opinion was not a big one.
No, but I'm talking just purely in terms of the number of positions within town. Not talking about salaries, just purely within those. I think that what might be good in this may, I don't know whether it's better select board, but the budget committees understand it would be, you know, here's what we said we were going to do. Here's what we did. And because there are other people in town who just like to know that, like that this position at DPW, like, look, here's all the projects he's taking on. Here's. You know, the budget committee can clearly see that we stopped using the contracted services. Some of the things that we said were going to happen are happening.
Yeah.
You know, which is good and it's good to sort of touch back and, and.
And there are going to be mile markers refined that maybe it wasn't a great goal and we didn't know that. We've learned something. It's okay to learn too.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, but certainly it might be a good practice just to have a one year review of all three of those. Changes. I mean, we should always be evaluating staff and positions and, and everything, but. In particular, because there's definitely a lot of discussion of, you know, is this too much all at once? Uh, you know, a lot of, a lot of discussions around it. So taking on the three sort of. And that way you're not signals, you know, you're about when you add or change a position significantly, a year later we go back and look and. Here's what we said we were going to do. Here's what we did. Did it work? Did it not work? Did we change on the way? You know? I, I would like to see something along that lines and I know it's a little challenging because you weren't here, uh, but we can certainly pull together.
Well, and I think making it more challenging to the conflicting stories and. YSL will be a perfect one to throw out here that on one side we're seeing. You should be more involved there and other side said, no, that position was not supposed to be involved. So I'm getting it from both sides there. Right now we're working with them to figure out. How we merge these together to work together.
That'd be a good conversation to have with the select board who supported the town manager that was in place at that time.
Did what?
We, the, so the, the select board worked directly. No, that's, yeah, the select board worked directly with the town manager, been turned over in place at that time. So. There's some good history there as well.
Next line.
So the principal expenses, I think that's where we're at.
Yeah, so it's just mean we're loans all pastish?
We were, yeah, we did patriotic purchases. Old home days will net out at the end of the year. Just keep track of expenses at the end of the year. We, we true that up to come out of their fund. Um, conservation commission, the biggest thing there on their supply line was that they. They purchased a whole bunch of wildlife crossing signs and then came to the select board asking to place them and it was decided not to place them. So. We have some signs there. Um, we are working. It's going to be a while because we're busy, but we're working on a. Assigned policy of when we will and will not place signs. Just so you know, our big discussion there and a few other sign requests since then is the state and nationally, they've been doing a lot of studies on this. And they're finding that child of play signs, deaf person ahead signs, wildlife signs are creating white noise and people are ignoring signs here. So they asked us to very sparingly place those signs only in places that are of critical need and signage. The child at play, they had just said, don't do it. There actually been lawsuits against towns saying that that's encouraging people to play in the street. So. So we won't place those signs, but anyway. There was a lot of debate about that, but that's, that's where that expense and stuff came from.
So when it comes to the principal and interest payments, we budget for those things that are coming from the general fund, those things that are coming from the CIP capital reserve fund. Or any other reserve fund are not budgeted, but we have to put the expense somewhere when we pay the bill. And at the end of the year, we get the transfer from the trustee of trust funds for two cover those expenses.
There's a few other places out there that, you know. Masoma Lakeside Park is a year in transfer. Same thing. We budget them there and then we true up at the end of the year out of the fund. Machinery and vehicles, same thing year in transfer from VIP or other funds. The community building, we're going to. Let's say year in transferred.
How many years until the thing that will start?
Who? I think what else?
I started coming, I was.
Yeah. You're already, huh?
Yeah.
I can talk to you guys about that in a little while. I'll, I'll update you before we leave on those few projects.
Okay.
Um, fuel system upgrade, that's going to be a year in transfer. We did get the, the upgrade completed, so it's up and running now. Bridges and culverts, that'll be loan proceeds. That's the other one I was going to talk about that we, we start spending right now. We have the loan in place. We just haven't drawn on the loan yet. We will. And we'll, we'll true that up. Not that we're making much interest or not paying much interest, but if we can delay that and have cash on hand, it's better to do it that way. Prior year encumbrances as. It's a fairly self explanatory and will be. I think most of these are self explanatory. If you go to the employer paid ICMA. That shouldn't be on that in your contract.
Yes. So, yep, so there's a very small percent, there's seven and a half percent. Of town manager costs in water and sewer each. Um, so that's why it's a small amount.
The bag guy there.
You have a bathroom. Because we were not planning on it in ICMA, but we have the savings on the other side of something.
So as you go down, uh, in water, we had a pump replacement for the well that went out. So that was the new, new and replacement and then the meter and back flows, the meter program. That has been over expended, I believe, in both water and sewer. If not, it's a lot in sewer. But, um, that's a great program. I'll get you a lot better data when we get to the DPW part. I'll have Jim talk about that, but we went from spending weeks. Reading meters down to days and we're hopefully trying to get that down to hours. So. It's an expenditure now, a cost savings and labor later.
So in debt service, basically we budgeted for payments on the loans for the water and sewer infrastructure projects. So you see this in the sewer as well. Not knowing when the loans were going to, when they're being taken out, payments would start. So we did not have payments this year.
Yeah. And the good news on that, if you guys didn't hear, um, we were able to go. SRF loans with some forgiveness and we got ARPA funds for the water sewer projects that the town bonded. So we ended up getting sixty percent grants. And forty percent will have to actually pay back in bond. So. Pretty close to fifty fifty, a little bit better, but so about one point eight to one point nine million total instead of one point nine million per each.
What were the key happenings in SRF?
SRF is a loan program through the federal government that runs through the state and they.
Revolving fund.
State revolving loan fund and they have a forgiveness program in there.
She knows me. I just want to, we're going to stick with the happen. What, the other one?
ARPA.
When are those on the books to happen? When do we expect them to?
The project?
Yeah.
They're happening now. We're just not putting shovels in the ground. So. Engineering's pretty much complete. The RFPs are written and being reviewed, getting ready to go after RFP ending construction will start next spring, summer timeframe is what we're looking at. You know, a lot of times people will say that, well, nothing's happening. Well, a lot's happening. It's just not shovels in the ground right now. There was. A lot of engineering work and planning and getting loans in the right way that we get some money back.
Would those be useful topics in the newsletter now and then?
Hey. It's in this newsletter.
You didn't read it?
Oh, no.
Haven't read the last one.
Is Maple Street work being coordinated with the potential development?
What?
Is the Maple Street re, excavation and repaving work being coordinated with the potential development? Or is that going to get?
The development is.
Isn't.
Very, very infant.
It's conceptual.
I, I understand. I'm just trying to avoid watching them tear up new asphalt.
We're going to make them pay for it if they're after.
We're going to do our project. We're not waiting for that. It's been here twice and hasn't happened. So.
And we've asked them, so just if you saw the valley news, there's a, there was a conceptual hearing at planning board, um. Uh, for a potential development that wrapped, the, the property wraps Maple Street downwards before. They came for a very preliminary one to say like, do you generally like this? Are you going to throw us directly out the door? They've got to get numbers from us. They have a lot of. Work to do. They have work to do with the state and to update they've everything from the highway folks all the way through DDS. So. Very preliminary. We recommended that they come back for a second conceptual. We're not promising this, they're only one, but that's, so they're not even towards the actual proposal phase. Um. I think, you know, I'm not trying to be discouraging, but it's, it's going to be.
No, if it gets close and we're at about the same timeframe, we will definitely coordinate that, but I'm not going to delay our project waiting to see it this time.
It's a substantial body of work they have to do.
Yeah. We can, we can work with them to make sure that they save up their appropriate amount. That is.
The other thing is they're not looking to go Maple Street.
Yeah, they are. Water and sewers are.
Yeah.
Water sewer. I mentioned it. Yeah.
Yeah.
But the.
They, they could put in their tie-ins to Maple Street if they wanted to. It's a preliminary exercise.
Yeah, if we know it's coming.
That's right.
We'll continue to watch it, but it's. It's an infant conversation at this point. Really, really early.
Oh, it made a great article for the news because it had a pretty top shirt.
I don't think you ought to be burying the town shovels in the ground. Just a thought. Just a thought. Yeah, we just have to buy more.
Shovels are for.
Line seven, thirty one and thirty two are. Those quarter run or those two separate ones? The numbers are very cool.
They have, that is a project.
I just had a thought. Groundbreaking ceremonies? Is that the sort of thing that people might? Never really thought much about it. Is that something you could do at the beginning of a project before all the engineering starts? Just a sort of symbolic? You approved it. Here's the groundbreaking. I don't know.
I think it's better just to.
I've never, never seen that done for a water sewer project, but. We could be at first.
Why are we poking the weevil?
You know, on the building projects, I can see before construction goes from the ground actually.
We just pushed our fire separate.
It's just.
I, I just.
By the long delay, invisible activity to the public.
Yeah.
It may be a bone to throw the dog there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and we need to do a little better job. We've been trying to get that communication. Fair as well.
We're going to compost this.
So the next page is pretty self explanatory. We talked about that in the other one. Admin repairs, if you move down, there was change in personnel and some coding issues we'll be working on. Sewer department health was protective equipment. Over expended a little, but if you're going to over expend on safety, that's a good place to do it.
You got like breathing air brings?
No, they replaced harnesses for going into confined spaces.
And you've done some confined space training that was, right?
Fire department did and they worked with us, but this is sewer department. They got them.
Did they do cross, did they do cross training with our internal folks or not?
I don't know that they cross trained because it's two different things. I mean, water sewer is working in a confined space and fire rescues. Rescuing someone from a confined space, but they do, they do work together on the confined spaces and I know our fire people train on our confined spaces sometimes.
When our sewer guys did track, as their harnesses are too old, fire guys can come.
And I think that's it. Everything else is pretty self explanatory unless you have questions.
Any other thought question? Nice detail to put.
Yes, lovely.
Speaking of, like, for the water sewer thing, one way. Um, that wouldn't take terribly long to explore it out, but people don't look at the website or the newsletter. It's the users when you build, put a letter in there. And we had them working hard on this, no shovels in the ground yet. And then they're going to tell people.
That was in Spain.
Right. Everyone's paying.
Or they're going to tell everybody that we're all going to avoid it. Or not.
Right.
Just to be clear. Yeah, yeah, no, we're not doing that anymore.
You want to do budget goals? Yes. Well, there goes that chair.
We, we're really not. Because that chair tried to get you.
They're not rated for. Wait, so that when we make somebody lean back in, it's just. You haven't issued last year.
That was me.
So chairs, that's a budget goal.
Safety is a goal.
Training, now it's gone down. You need safety training for chair usage.
We need to maybe buy chairs that are a little bit.
We should email the joint law safety committee.
Oh, gosh.
When, when you say budget goals, is, or do you have something in mind? Do you want to discuss or are you probing? People here from what desire, so.
Probing you, but I will say, you know, let's get past the. Pressure of the downgrade or cheaper. I think we all, we want to keep taxes as low as possible. I mean, let's think of this next year, think of. You know, what we may want to accomplish, what we want to do. We talked a little bit about some information we want here so we can make some other decisions, but. You know, what are we truly aiming for? I mean, I'm going through the budget and I'm. Building what I think should be a good budget, but it would be nice to have some feedback into. What are we trying to do? What are we looking for? I mean, we have some policies. We know we're going to look at our fund balance and we want to be in that, that twelve to fifteen percent range and. You know, is there anything else we really need to be working on, looking at? Is there something you guys would really like to see done?
Wants to go first?
I want more skin coating in front of his house.
We got, we're done.
I would be interested in hearing from Mr. Taylor. What that, what's their philosophy about that?
We'll talk about it and like I said, it will be changing and then strategically have a discussion when we pull the new highway superintendent on board, which will be happening. Later this year. Scott Johnson is retiring in November and will be replacing that and that person is in charge of road maintenance and. I want to just have that discussion when we get some new person on board of how we're going to do things moving forward.
That tend to be announced.
We don't know. We're looking in and out. So if you know anybody that has road or building experience, send them one.
I just want to be clear on that. Opposing it or proposing it? I'm just curious. And it's the, why did they do that?
Yeah, I talked.
Maybe I'll just come in and talk to them instead of wanting to curiosity.
I mean, it is something that's been done for many years and many towns, and I think it was just a way to. Stretch, not having to spend the money to, to do a full rebuild and. I have a little bit different philosophy and we'll be talking here that, you know, I'm more. Let's figure out what roads need to be fixed and let's fix them right and do it. And then, then let's really put some effort into road maintenance.
Can I back up for a second? Slightly different subject, I guess. Um, on the last page, the prior year encumbrance of thirty thousand dollars for crosswalk signs, where is that?
That's been ended up going away.
Where was it? In other words, where was it intended?
Up on Route four by Yates and I think there was one of the.
So why? So why I thought it was gonna happen?
We're waiting for that state project that's supposed to be in the works for next year or the year after. And then they also just proposed us another whole intersection change up there, so we didn't wanna spend thirty thousand dollars and tear it back out.
Yeah, we talked about.
So. I guess that leads to my other comment, which is one thing I'd like to see from Jim, is a summary of the past year projects which have not yet been completed. Both the ones which affect this building, for example, as well as other road projects that have been listed, reviewed by CIP, but not done.
The state is super fun to deal with on crosswalks, I'll just tell you that. They are just, they, they do their own little state thing and you just.
They do, but, but other towns in the area have worked through those barriers.
And get it done.
And success getting sidewalks and crosswalks on state roads, so it is a solvable problem.
Right.
And we have a number of intersections that we need to work through those.
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna throw it out there that the Ed Field Elementary School needs some attention as far as safety is concerned. Now, I'm, I'll, I'll admit a personal story there. I am now picking up my granddaughter each day. Two granddaughters, actually, so it's Monday through Friday. And I'm watching these kindergartners cross that road, and this is unbelievably dangerous. And I'm not sure why there's nothing there. As a layperson, I look at it and I go, why is there nothing there?
We watched the crossing guard get hit.
I, 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 I don't get it personally. I, I hope, I don't think it's a school issue.
No, it's not.
But I, I, I want the budget committee to be looking at something there.
The other one I'll add is, so I used to drop off kids every morning, right, for years. Unlike clockwork, you could see people speeding in the twenty mile an hour zone before the turn, and then slow down as soon as they hit the turn and they see the cop. But people were going way faster, including big tractor trailers.
Except midday, when the kindergartners are going on a little trip. Walking around town, which is exactly what we want them to do. There's no one there but the teacher. Yep, now they're wisely using two teachers right now, but these are late persons.
And you guys are on goals. Can you make safety one of your voluntary goals and just like using safety across, because it crosses all of your departments, is that a?
I don't have a problem with that.
So I'm giving you thirty thousand dollars and saying it was Jake's and now it needs to move up the street.
No, it was to separate. It was Jake and it was both.
Yes.
Right, it was both.
Basically, they're gonna come back, we can put it in now, but they're gonna come through and dig it out, right?
Right, but like how many? When was it approved first? Okay, so not that long ago.
Once into twenty twenty.
Got it, so it's not that long.
They're, yeah.
Yes, no. How long we would wait? I was working on a state project in Claremont that was supposed to happen every year for the last twelve years, so.
I agree with Tracy. It's not just the kindergartens then either. It's any time those kids go to the library, you cut the same issue. And that's midday.
You have that entire stretch of four.
Right.
I, slowing people, my life goal right now is to slow people down from the beginning of four and then feel to the end. I want traffic calming all the way around, and I think it's worth negotiating, working with our planning department and really, you know, if we have to have traffic calming wedges and complete streets and all of the tools in our tool belt to make sure that people are safe of all ages. Because it's very dangerous whether you're a kid or not.
Europe loves roundabouts.
I love roundabouts. There may be. Traffic calming wedges. The state will really love us when they're plowing.
Anybody, anything else?
Nope. I passed away, you know.
The only one I'll add is, I think we're at our twelve percent now. And, you know, we've talked for years about slowing it down. I know that in the past, there's been big variances as a result of understaffing. That may now no longer be present, which is great. But it would be good if, for next year, we don't like massively overshoot.
Yeah.
Well, one of the things that will help is this year's town meeting that approved, you know, using the undersigned fund balance to purchase things that we're planning to get anyway, and that's one way to help control the, the steep rise.
But I think if, if we now can keep it close to twelve, it's, it's gonna be proof in that, hey, we were successful in what we were trying to do and.
No, I think that's the goal of this day and that.
Alyssa and Ed, does that mean that like at this, at this point, while we're starting the budgeting process, we can look back and say, this is what we, this is how much the unassigned balance increased, so let's use that, let's use an equivalent amount this year to buy some stuff. Is that the idea to, is that how we would flatten the increase in the?
I think we, I think we look at where we're at on fund balance on an annual basis, and then we make a strategic decision of what we do with any overage, whether we, you know, we may decide to keep it one year and we may say, hey, we have this expenditure we wanna make happen. It's a one-time expenditure, we're gonna utilize that money for that.
What's the mechanism of that spending? Do we have a warrant?
Yes.
Does your software do any of the pieces for you, like look at the last five years and I, there's, you know, a lot of the business software does, right?
You can look at some stuff. It's not the, it's not the most of the best software.
I don't know that we have all of the bells and whistles in the software.
Just asking, yeah.
They're expensive.
I'll just say one thing, it's not really related directly to the budget committee's work, but as there's sort of discussions around CIP and doing things within CIP other than just, you know, vehicles essentially. I think we should have a broader conversation of, of how CIP is, you know, do we wanna stay with just vehicles? Do we wanna transition it? And sort of both of these groups and the CIP committee all have significant impact there or input there. Because a few people have asked me questions where they clearly had a hundred percent incorrect information around CIP funds and, so I think, I think we're at a point where we need a sort of a broader conversation or education of the community about how it's being used, what the plan is, and how those decisions are being made.
So when it was created, it was for vehicles, equipment and infrastructure. So that was part of the purpose and that could be changed.
Correct, that's the.
It's a town meeting bonus.
Right, but what I'm saying is, there's an education piece where the only thing we have done is vehicles. And now there are discussions around other things, which are perfectly appropriate. However, there's an education piece, and we don't have to get into it here, but I think there's just, there's a piece there of.
Road projects already.
Yeah, so I think, and that's infrastructure, but not everyone knows.
I know what you mean, right. It was originally sold. I don't care how it was written. It was originally sold as we got three dollars in the capital bond here, and we can't buy a truck with three dollars.
It's a nickel.
That was how we started it. So, no, but I agree with you. It needs to be a, a longer conversation. I thought you summarized it fairly well at the end of the planning board meeting, when you said that projects over ten thousand dollars would go through the CIP plan. And you were trying to very clearly distinguish between CIP plan and CIP funding, and they are two different things.
And we.
And I thought you put it quite well, that projects over ten thousand dollars should pass through the CIP plan and therefore the CIP committee. And the resolution of funding those is then resolved.
But I think that's an important note for people to remember, that there's a, a plan and a CIP fund, that they're not necessarily the same thing.
And, and the other, the other question that's already coming up is, you know, people thinking that we vote on every, the town meeting votes on every expenditure from CIP, which has not ever been the case. We voted on debt-related items. And, but we've used a lot of debt-related items because interest rates have been so low and that makes sense. And now that we're transitioning to paying cash, there's going to be a transition with fewer items voted on at town meeting. So I think there's an education and engagement piece that we need to.
They could actually be numb this year.
Right.
Because we are going full cash at this point.
Right.
Are both full and full cash.
Right.
But, and, which also answers the question, why do you have one point six million dollars there for a day like today?
Right.
When interest rates are going up, and you can now pay for it in cash, because you don't have three dollars in the CIP.
Then it's gone.
Right, well, yeah, but, but, but I think the story is that CIP has worked.
Right. It's been a good program. We wanna continue it. We want people in town to feel good about it.
Right.
And there's, as we sort of make these transitions, which were all planned from the start.
Yeah.
We need to educate people on what's going on and why you're not seeing articles in town meetings. Why, you know, why are you seeing bridges now or whatever?
Right, yeah.
I think we just need to have, there's a, there's an engagement component that we need to take on, and I think everybody.
You're gonna see changes in plan.
Right, right.
Has nothing to do with how much we're going to spend, and it wanted to be connected to a warrant article will be more in the budget piece.
The year before COVID, we bound the plan with a little ring, because it's a very visual thing, right, for somebody to and said you can flip through the actual plan and touch the plan, right? Because that's hard for people when they might not run their household or their life that way. You know, not everybody has enough cash to self-finance something, so definitely that education piece and maybe going back to now that we can touch things again. Having the plan available for people to touch, and obviously it's online, but not everyone likes to do that. And I know when I look at, this is one of the, that, that CIP plan is one of the few things I actually like as paper. It's a pretty helpful.
Yeah, but, but I guess I would just encourage everybody at this table to sort of be familiar with it, be familiar with some of the, you know, the reasons behind it a lot, because, because we're gonna get to questions and part of our job is to educate people on, on the CIP.
The ceiling, so the standards have been over the years five thousand dollars, and we raised it to ten thousand. You guys in your budget this year are going to see thing, more things, right? So we'll be in the budget instead of CIP, because five thousand dollars ten years ago is not to say that's five thousand dollars today. So, just.
Another question, should it even be, is that a low, a low number? Everything that's over ten thousand goes through CIP plan?
Well, we raised it from five.
I know, but should it be raised even more?
I don't think so.
Ten thousand is a serious amount of money that deserves to be considered by a group before it goes on to the next step.
Definitely.
Because if not, it's gonna have to be a supply on a department, and it's gonna have to go through budget process. As a supply, if you say a fifteen or twenty thousand, that means it's gotta show on their expenses.
Right, fixing something, ten thousand stops.
And the other thing to think about on goals, we can talk about it today. I know it's a deep conversation, but we finished the year last year talking compensation. Talked about doing more this year. Inflation and everything happening around us, it's making it tough on everybody, but it's also raising wages everywhere. So, I don't know what your guys' plan are. I'm, as of right now, for placeholders, I'm planning on putting five percent in the budget, which is what we talked about last year. There are places around us going up more than that, so it's something we're gonna have to look at.
Maybe you can come up with some examples for us and we can really do a thorough study of that after. As people begin to read about things like the social security increase, which is now scheduled at seven point two. They're gonna be able to use that as a statistic to request those raises.
And so.
That, that's a really practical point.
So last year, the police chief and Alyssa collected a lot of information from neighboring towns, and then I have my spreadsheet somewhere still.
We're already, we're already started.
Okay, so data, 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 right? And so I'm an engineer, data, 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 so I think we add to that and see what the numbers say, right? And so I think last year you saw how certain people voted no, and then they saw the data and they, they actually proposed an increase. So I would just go, go with the data.
One of the pieces I don't think that was done last year, just because the data kind of, we didn't have full staffing, obviously, either on our end. So, is that I don't think that we've ever calculated the cost of turnover. And in most, most businesses, when you're looking at raises, you've got, you do the estimated cost of turnover, so retraining and whatever. Think, you know, it's very rarely in any of my experiences ever been under nine thousand dollars, so.
It was, uh, discussed qualitatively at length, but not in any quantitative.
Yes, exactly, exactly, so that's.
I think the easiest way to do that, and it's, you can't, it's really hard to pin a number unless you're looking position to position, which would be extremely painstaking to put all that data together, but if you look at Forbes and a lot of places, it usually ranges somewhere between the seventy-five to a hundred and fifty, and some executive levels are upwards of two hundred percent of the annual salary, is what you can think, so if you think about that, you know, it kinda makes sense as you get to the lower salary ranges, the cost of turnover is not quite as much as some of the experienced higher level.
I think they have them classified by job classification on places, and I, I've used some of those over the years, make some decisions.
It was hard. I, I did the work on that in Claremont when I was there, and we were in that sixty to seventy-five thousand dollar range to turn over a police officer by the time you do training and all the equipment and field training and officer ties to train them and.
Loss of efficiency.
Pretty expensive. Our HR director was somewhere in that hundred thousand dollar range to turn over and, so.
Makes the five percent.
It is, but we need to do that research. The other thing I did and will bring forward is we had talked about doing a compensation study last year. There was nothing budgeted for. I did get a few numbers on there, and it looks like it's somewhere in that fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range to do a, across the town full compensation, but, but we might be able to steal some of that data from places too and not have to pay for that.
Cost of training, you know, a lot of history. And some of that is, you don't get that bad. Some people you're happy to.
So with that, I hope we were gonna continue with five percent in it, with you guys knowing that we're gonna have that conversation as well. Upper down that.
I assume you don't need my spreadsheet. You have all the data.
We'll work on it together.
I can, I can send you my spreadsheet.
Feel free.
It was very effective.
But there were two big topics I heard talked about, route four, crosswalks, safety and, and compensation, and there was a third one that I that's in my brain. Anybody remember what it was during this last session? We were talking about goals.
Was it CIP?
Educate, CIP education. Marketing.
Yeah, I'm just making sure everyone's familiar with. And then I'd say continue targeting the twelve percent. Let's, let's not. The credibility of the budget community would go down if we suddenly overshot it. We've been saying, hey, we're gonna slow down, we're gonna get closer to twelve. If you need one more.
I think we're veering off into.
I, I, I just wanna make one more reminder though that, um, okay, right, exactly, so, so Gene, Gene, I don't know if everyone has heard, resigned from the committee. And of course, I've moved the select board, so I'm not on the committee anymore, so you'll see there are eight of you around the table, including John.
Actually, seven only, right, oh, right.
Well, including John as the select board, so there are two positions that you have control over as the budget committee.
No.
He's on the select board.
No, we're keeping him.
He didn't volunteer.
You too.
John has done a nice job of, of representing the select board on the budget committee.
We'll be around.
But I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't.
I sent an, I, and I think any of you guys who do this, if you see somebody who has like a good mindset numbers and take, go right on the website and you can pick up the volunteer form, I write to them and I say, here's the volunteer form. And when, once you've completed it, you can send it to Alyssa, and then I copy Alyssa. And it seems to work okay-ish on getting people.
So everybody who's actually on the committee is now present, because I wanted to ask like, is the attendance?
Richard, what do you, what do you ask?
Well, there are seven people here. I noticed in the beginning.
All of you are here.
We do not.
Any empty chairs?
Pretend Eric and I are not here.
Case I are here as part of the select board meeting that's happening right now, not as part of the budget.
You have two vacancies.
So last year we put something in a newsletter and then what else did we do?
Well, we, we put it on Facebook. We put it in the newsletter. We put it on listserv and word of mouth, you guys talking to people is what's gonna work best. It always does. We, we have put it out there a thousand times. It's in the newsletter every month. Until we get people.
And, and this is a cycle of any town. It's not really concerned about it, right? But involving some new, new fresh faces would be awesome.
But if you're out talking to somebody about budget and they look interesting, tell them to apply.
Or say they like numbers.
Well, the people that come to you and ask you, would you like to be on the budget?
Yeah, some of those people I don't want.
Has a really bright mind.
That's not true. People watch it.
Are we setting dates for our next meeting?
So the only other thing I have, yeah, I, I put together this budget calendar. If you guys would like to look at it, it's actually based on meeting every two weeks, some days. We can, we can set around if you guys would like. The one thing I did do, I was starting looking at it doing twice a month, but if we did every other week and then we took a holiday break on December twenty seventh, it just, it works out. Every department gets to come through and it gives us three days before we have public hearings and stuff to dig into the final budget and make final changes.
Um, so you need snow days.
Well, I.
You need a couple. I can't do the week of October eighteenth.
Uh-oh, Shirley.
I'm across the country.
Well, that's why you have an owl. You have a computer. And we'll be dialing it.
Right.
Unfortunately, I'm, time zone differences and meetings with government officials prevent me from attending unless we want to do a meeting at ten PM local time.
So this is just a proposal too, but I wanted to get it to the budget committee. I would like to be able to go to my department heads and say.
So.
So they, they know when to be prepared by.
I, I can shift it to the week after. If anybody.
We could do two weeks in a row.
Can't speak for myself. I'm sort of locked into some things that J U A gave from, but I can't make final decisions.
If other people are okay with that. So option one, it's the eighteenth and we have somebody else presiding. Or the twenty fifth. Anybody objecting for the next meeting to be on the twenty fifth?
What's?
I, I'm suggesting we still have the meeting on the eighteenth. Catch it on video when you return because we're still preliminary. We're fortunately not into the meat of everything. At that meeting, it's still gonna be preliminary enough so that we'll have broad discussions that will be very much in flux when you return.
Well, that's when Ed is gonna present the budget.
Exactly. He'll present it, uh, and you'll have a copy of it certainly, but, um, things will only be beginning to take a broad.
I'm, I'm only saying. I have no problem missing the next meeting.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So just we'll keep the calendar because there's gonna be other people missing meetings. John, can you make the eighteen?
I think so.
Can I say we press forward?
And hopefully we'll have two people, two names to.
Perhaps we might.
Approve.
If we need to add anything, we can.
And are we planning to do the same format as last year where we kind of do a review of a department? We discuss it. We move on to the next department. We don't. Right. We don't go line by line to the whole budget at the end.
We generally have a liaison for each.
We did not do that last year.
No, and I've asked them, just so you guys know the process that I'm using, that's what I've asked the departments to. Give me a budget to sustain what you're doing right now and then give me an extra column of things you want to add or change to the budget. So as I either put those in or cut them from the budget before you see them. I will keep those highlighted so that it's easy for us to go through and, and identify what we're really, what any major changes in the budget are. There may be some small monetary changes and that's just the, the cost of fuel lineup. So this went up a little. We don't have to dive into details on every one of those.
I know some people like to read all this on screens, but I don't. Can, can we get a copy of the budget? And then when you make changes, just give us the replacement measures.
It doesn't always keep. It'll be single sided. So. It can give you departments.
That'd be fine. I, I don't need to have a nuke set every week. I don't like reading.
I like that too. Yeah. I get tired of screens.
What version we were looking at.
Right.
Except you put out data.
Oh gosh, I remember that. Oh, that's awful. Yeah.
I was saying we'll plan on printing copies. Let Alyssa know. If not, you're gonna get.
If they master, I'll change it.
Anything else you want to change to last year's process, which I think worked pretty well?
I think you ought to set a snow date for the, um, public budget hearing. We've had those in the past and I.
There actually is one and I don't, so the budget, so Tuesday, the seventh is the select board's um, day to accept petition warrant articles.
Yep.
And it's missing on here, but Wednesday, the eighth is what I have on the calendar for the public hearing date. With the Thursday being the snow date.
That's what you have on the town calendar?
That's what I have on my calendar.
Okay.
So, so the ninth here is the snow date and the eighth was the actual.
Now I really am gonna make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
So I just wanna say a aye.
Select board. Select board's adjourning. I'll make a motion. Budget committee.
Anybody second? Second on the budget, anybody in favor? Aye.